Good evening. So I call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to reply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Robinson, roll call, please.
Counselor Dr. West Bellamy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Heather Hill.
Here.
Mayor Nakia Walker.
Present.
Counselor Mike Signer.
Here.
Counselor Kathy Galvin.
Here.
Are there any announcements?
I have an announcement. This is from the Registrar's office. This is the last week of absentee voting for the June 11th Democratic primary to decide on the primaries nominees for City Council and House of Delegates for the fall elections. Virginia does not have a party registration and any qualified voter may vote in a primary. In Virginia, voters must have a reason for voting absentee, for example, if they will be away on Election Day or have a disability or illness. Qualified city registered voters may vote absentee in the City Voter Registration Office during office hours between 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. through Friday of this week, June 7th, and on Saturday, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. on June 8th. The offices in the City Hall Annex next to the Pavilion curbside service is available for absentee voters who are disabled or who are 65 or older and have a qualifying absentee voting reason. Voters must show a photo ID when voting in person, just as on Election Day. Voters who do not have an acceptable ID may apply for a free photo ID for voting during office hours, including next Saturday, in the voter registration office. On Election Day, Tuesday, June 11th, all regular polling places will be open from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Curbside voting is available to all polling places for voters who are disabled or age 65 and older. If you have questions about where you vote or absentee voting or other voting issues, please call the office at (434) 970-3250. And Mayor Walker, I think we were going to do...
Any other?
Did you want to?
I have a couple of announcements. On behalf of Ms. Maxine, or excuse me, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Mrs. Maxine Holling and the African American Heritage Center, we've announced this a couple of times before, but as it's coming up, I'd like to say it one more time. The 19th Annual Juneteenth Celebration, known as Reverence, will take place on Friday, June 14th, as well as Saturday, June 15th, which will be next weekend at the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. On Friday, June 14th, the events will kick off honoring our local ancestors from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The guest speaker will be Mr. Calvin Pearson, founder and president of Project 1619, as he tells the true story of where the first Africans arrived in Virginia. On Saturday, June 15th, there will be a party on the lawn from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And it'll feature several artists, spoken word performers, as well as a slew of other individuals, including fraternity, sorority, civic leaders, social clubs, churches, and community vendors. Now, for those who are not aware, dating back to 1865, Juneteenth is a blend of June and 19th is the oldest known celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States. It's a great way to remember the struggle that black people waged to free themselves and save the Union. All of these events will again take place on Fri- excuse me, Friday and Saturday, June 14th and 15th, at the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center. One more announcement, just for everyone's information, on Sa- excuse me, this upcoming Sunday at 9:30 a.m. at Mount Zion First African Baptist Church, there will be a graduation ceremony for all of the local graduates. The church will be honoring all those who not only attend their school, but others from throughout the area. Again, that's at Mount Zion First African Baptist Church at their 9:30 a.m. service for anyone who'd like to attend. The keynote speaker will be Richmond's Mayor, Mayor LeVar Stoney. And then, please keep in mind, on Saturday, June 28th, we'll have the Run These Streets Four-Miler Event, on which we get members of the community to run all across different African Ameri- traditional African American communities here in Charlottesville. Feel free to sign up at weco2cville.com/RunTheseStreets.
Do you have an announcement?
I just know if we were talking about taking a moment. Did you want to do that now? So, I think we're asking...
You want to do that right before the proclamation?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have an announcement. So the second annual Get Your Healthy On With Mayor Walker registration is up. If you are interested, you can email getfitcville@gmail.com. There's assistance with running shoes, walking shoes, with Ragged Mountain Running Shop. The race and registration for the four-miler training program and the race fees will be paid for by Red Light Management if you need that also. And it's a 13-week training. And race day this year for the four-miler is August 31st at 8:00 a.m. at Foxfield, so please consider joining us for the summer. Are there any other announcements? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, never mind. I'll say the announcement before.
All right, proclamations?
So I believe we have two. I can go first, but I think before, Council was interested in having a moment of silence as we think about the victims of the Virginia Beach travesty that took place last Friday. Obviously, as folks that work close to our municipal partners, it certainly hits home here, so would you please have a moment of silence? Thank you. And we had actually already planned to have this proclamation today, recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas the National Coalition of Organizations has designated the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor Hadia Pendleton and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of her friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. Whereas every day, 96 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year in America. Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas we renew our commitment to honor and value human lives, reduce gun violence, and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our community safe. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Nakia Walker of the City of Charlottesville hereby proclaims June 7th, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Charlottesville. And we encourage all members of the community who wish to honor those who have been victimized by gun violence to wear orange on that day. Signed and sealed this third day of June 2019 by Mayor Walker. And I believe we have some representatives that are here from our local Moms Demands Action.
Let's give these ladies a round of applause, please.
And gentlemen.
Thank you. Dr. Bellamy?
All right. This next announcement, I might get in trouble for reading it from my wife, but nonetheless, we're gonna read it anyway. Hope I can stay up on this y'all house after this. So it's a proclamation as well as an announcement. So I will read the announcement first, just for FYI. Please be aware that we are going to be honoring not only the lovely ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter this evening, but they're also doing a great deal of work in the community. In fact, they're going to be rubbing elbows with some folks in the community this Saturday at the Jefferson School, so they're definitely to be commended for that. And we have a proclamation, if we can, let's give a round of applause to the lovely ladies in the red in the back for Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. Hey, Ashley. So, whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, on the campus of Howard University in Washington, D.C. by 22 phenomenal collegiate women who saw no limit to their vision for sisterhood, scholarship, and service. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an organization of predominantly black college-educated women committed to using their collective strength to promote academic excellence and provide assistance to those in need with a primary focus on the African American community. Whereas since its establishment, more than 300,000 women have joined the sorority. It is a sisterhood that has over 940 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States, the Bahamas, Bermuda, Canada, England, Germany, Japan, Tokyo, and Okinawa, Jamaica, Liberia, South Korea, and the Virgin Islands. And whereas the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter was chartered on June 7th, 1969, by 12 local members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, who were committed to improving the political education and social and economic conditions in Charlottesville City and surrounding areas through the organization's five-point pragmatic thrust, economic development, educational development, international awareness, and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter has clearly distinguished itself as a public service organization that boldly confronts the challenges of African Americans and hints all Americans and citizens of Charlottesville. Whereas for 50 years in realizing its mission, the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter has developed and implemented a wide range of programs with special emphasis in the areas of education, health, international development, and the strengthening of the black family. Recognizing the achievements of African American students, providing tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships to high school students, participating in community cleanups, and presenting cultural enrichment opportunities which are ongoing activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that our lovely Mayor Nakia Walker, Mayor of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, hereby takes great pleasure in recognizing the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on its 50-year anniversary celebration, June 7th, June 8th, and 9th, 2019, and paying tribute to its charter members, Ms. Virginia Bell, Fay Benton, Florence Bryant, Rosa Burks, Dorothy Conrad, Zelda DeBering, Daisy Holmes, Gertrude Mitchell, Nancy Pritchett, Felicia Rowe, Mary Jeanette Scott, and Josephine Witset for their efforts and foresight in establishing this organization in our city and surrounding communities. Let's give these lovely ladies a round of applause, please.
Thank you. My name is Alita Childs, and I'm the current president of the Charlottesville Alumni Chapter. And these are some of our members. And we would like to thank the mayor and the City Council in Charlottesville for honoring us today. Thank you.
All right, great job.
Mayor Walker, that's all that I have.
Okay. All right. So next, we have the consent agenda. Would anyone like to speak on a matter that's on the consent agenda?
Hey, I'm Rory Stoltenberg. I live on Water Street between First and Second. I'd like to applaud you all on repealing Section 17-8 of the City Code this evening. It's an outdated and age-discriminatory relic of the 1960s. I ask you guys to build on this progress by next reexamining the preceding Section 17-7, which criminalizes teenagers for living or being outside of their homes at certain hours of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Ms. Robinson, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. A, minutes. B, appropriation. Appropriation of funding for CPA TV from the Raul Thomas Show LLC, $4,247.50, second of two readings. C, appropriation, 2019 to 2020, community development block grant funding, $395,052.82, second of two readings. D, appropriation, 2019 to 2020, home investment partnership funding, $120,382.75, second of two readings. E, appropriation, Virginia Housing Solutions Program Grant Award, $16,500, second of two readings. F, appropriation, Greenstone on Fifth Corporation Sponsorship Agreement for Enhanced Police Coverage, $41,092, second of two readings. G, ordinance, repeal of Charlottesville City Code, Section 17-8, second of two readings.
All right. And I would like to pull C and D for a vote after.
C and D?
Yes. The community development block grant funding and the home investment partnership funding.
Haven't we pulled this one a couple of times?
The last time, we didn't vote because we didn't have five of us here.
Right.
So we need to get through it.
I'm fine with it, I just...
No, we're voting on it right after. We didn't vote on it last time because Counselor Signer...
Wasn't here. Okay. Okay, second.
Okay.
So I move we adopt the consent agenda with items C and D polled.
Second. Are there any further comments, questions? All right, please vote. Okay, that passes, 5-0.
I move that we adopt items C and D. Second.
Are there any further questions? All right, please vote. So that carries 4 to 1. All right, next, we have the City Manager's response to community matters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and the public. I have a number of items to report on tonight from our previous meeting. One is about the Trolley Route pilot study. I know that was a concern of many folks in the community, especially those in the business community. We will be having a discussion pertaining to that pilot project on Tuesday, June 25th, from 12:00 to 1:00 in the NDS Conference Room. Also, two question, I know it was from Mr. Johnson and Ms. Conyer pertaining to the magistrate's office. The address and name for the magistrate has been updated on our website, as well as the broken link has been fixed for that. So that information has been corrected and updated. Parking on 10th Street, Mr. Johnson, some of the things that were asked was pertaining to the number of permits that you can get for your home. There's a total of four permits per household and two guest permits that you can have. The first two are free, and a $25 fee for each additional permit. The next question that was raised was pertaining to the number of residents within a particular block that could petition for such a change, and that is 75% of the owners or residents within a block. Effective households have to give consent to having parking permits through a petition issued by the city, but the petitioner has to actually get that filled out. And lastly, pertaining to that, these petitions should be submitted between May 1st and the last day of February. And you can find that within our municipal code in Section 15-203, and it's under the title of Establishing Restricted Parking Blocks. The next item from Ms. Parker pertaining to 10th and Main, I know there's been a lot of concerns about that in the community, and I wanted to do some things that would be able to show that we are working to make some improvements with. One, I had the gentleman go out and paint the crosswalk on Friday. We'll place new signage at the intersection, as well as move some of the signage to make it more visible for those who are driving up and down West Main. Also, two, just to talk about the speed trailer that we had there, capture the speed of vehicles from May 13th through the 27th. The average speed for vehicles that crossed over that intersection was 23 miles per hour, and we have a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. That's just information to have. Moving on, also two, Ms. Parker pertaining to lights under the bridge. One, that we took a little bit farther, we went down, looked at the Amtrak parking lot and looked at the lights under there, and a contractor resolved the issue for the private property owner, and that fixture is not a part of the city. But also, two, on 8th Street, the tunnel light, we did notify Dominion, and the crew will assess the conditions, and they said they'd do that today and then provide us with an update, so I'll get back with you with an update as far as the progress that's going to be made there. The other item listed for tonight is Mr. Evans, he's talking about the no misconduct definition. And the no misconduct definition is administered by the Department of Criminal Justice Services. And any violation of that, the chief of police has to report that to the Department of Criminal Justice Services within 48 hours if the officer is in violation of one of the six categories pertaining to misconduct within a state statute. One of the questions that Mr. Caleb had is, do we have a, I mean, Mr. Evans said, asked was, do we have a policy? No, that's a state law, which requires us to, which requires the chief to report that in some of the conditions pertain to felony convictions, domestic assault, and failure to maintain compliance with training requirements. Moving on to construction permits, Ms. Mary Carey, Ms. Carey, one of the things that we were able to do is to talk with the contractor who actually is working on that development down on Main Street within the Walk Mall area. And the work hour that they should be working is from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at night. So my understanding, and the comments I got back from a few people in the community, that it has stopped since our last meeting. We will periodically check in with the developer for that parcel to ensure that he understands our ordinance and to decrease the probability of that happening again. Moving on to the next item, Mr. Meyer pertaining to the Airbnbs. Question was raised pertaining to why not use the Blacksberry, Blacksburg Alexandria model to collect taxes for Airbnbs? What it was said was that the Commissioner of Revenue's Office has collected over $1 million in transient occupancy tax since creating a separate licensing category, and has received over $360,000 in calendar year 2018 by using the methodology that they've been basically using since the inception of this. Accordingly, the Commissioner of Revenue stated that only two of 189 jurisdictions in the Commonwealth signed tax collection agreements with Airbnb. And he's asking that if anyone in the community sees any of their neighbors operating an untaxed Airbnb or homestay, or homestay operators, please contact his office. One of the things he did want to let the public know is that, you know, the requirements are listed at the top of his city webpage for those who are operating untaxed, but please let his office know if you know of anybody or any of your neighbors that are operating an untaxed Airbnb or homestay operator. And lastly, I just want the public to know that I've been trying to meet with individuals who came to the meeting who had complaints against the police department. What I've been trying to do is set up individual meetings so we can discuss that. I did meet with a couple of residents in the community, but I want to make sure that I am hearing your complaints and making sure that you do have follow-up to those complaints. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, may I just say something? Dr. Richardson, thank you for acting so quickly on the intersection with 8th and Main.
Yes.
That was a very basic maintenance issue, and you just took care of it. Thank you so much.
Yes, and we're still working through it, and that's why I want to meet with Ms. Parker to talk about any other concerns that she may have in that immediate area. And I forgot to mention, too, that we are going to be trimming the trees back.
Excellent, thank you.
So you can see the signs.
Just one more thing in regards to what's happened, there's some concerns about the light under the bridge. If we can get that looked into as well.
Yes, that's one of the things I mentioned. Yes, we actually have a work order in to Dominion to get that going.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, next, we have community matters. And first up, we have David Swanson.
Good evening, thank you, David Swanson, Gillespie Avenue. I basically want to thank the City Council for taking up the resolution that's on the agenda later this evening to divest funds from weapons dealers and fossil fuel companies, and thank Treasurer Jason Vandiver for drafting that. I very much hope that it passes. I find it very encouraging that this City Council listens to something that the public brings to it. It's something I've not seen in Washington, D.C. in my lifetime, and I'm not sure I've seen it in Richmond, but to have a government respond to its public is very encouraging. And to have a government break out of a disastrous but common habit of thought, which says we must focus only on short-term maximization of profit and nothing else, and it's our obligation, even if it kills us. I think it's encouraging, and it's breaking ground, and it's a model that other cities should follow. So I hope that this city passes this resolution on divestment and encourages other localities around the world to follow suit. I think localities with a conscience or even with self-interest that isn't too shortsighted ought to be all taking this up. And I also very much hope that this City Council will commit firmly to moving quickly on the other pot of money, the retirement fund, to divest that money from the same horrible places. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Trey Biasioli.
Good evening, Trey Biasioli, Mulberry Avenue in the city. I wanted to also speak briefly about the divestment resolution up on tonight's agenda. The corporations targeted by the divestment resolution profit by making our future and our children's future less secure. The city should align its investments with its values and invest in a positive future for us and for our children. Divestment is not just morally, but also financially prudent. As communities increasingly grapple with the challenges of climate change, fossil fuel companies are more likely to be left holding stranded assets that are going to be dead weight on their asset books. Making fossil fuels a problematic investment in an age of climate change. I'm glad to see this resolution on the city's agenda this evening, and I urge council to support it. and I urge council to support it. However, there's a disconnect between our stated goals in this resolution and the policies that we pursue here in the city. In particular, we continue to subsidize fossil fuels by providing natural gas infrastructure to new customers at no charge up to 150 feet from main gas lines. As a conservative estimate, based on rates charged beyond 150 feet, this is about a $600 subsidy for new customers. And that doesn't include costs to get the equipment and personnel onto site, nor to tap into the main gas lines. At roughly 400 new customers per year, that comes out to about a quarter million dollars per year that we're going to... that we're spending to subsidize fossil fuel infrastructure in our city. Likely twice that once all costs are included. This subsidy makes it more challenging to meet our proposed climate goals, and it's more likely that it's our own utility that's going to be the one left holding stranded assets when our society gets serious about tackling climate change in the future. I urge council to not only support the divestment... the divestment resolution that's on the agenda for this evening, but also consider a cease of using city funds to subsidize fossil fuel infrastructure in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Russell.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'll pass him down for you. No problem.
My name's Tony Russell. I live on Grace Street, right behind Burnley Moran School, and I'd like to speak to the issue of divestment as well. I want to talk about one small atmospheric physics point in not-too-technical way to explain why this is such an urgent matter. When Charles Keeling began taking air samples at Monoloa in 1958, the carbon dioxide level in the atmosphere was 280 parts per million. This spring, it hit its highest total in 3 million years, 415 parts per million. That's a 48% increase in just 61 years. Almost all of that extra carbon dioxide came from human burning of fossil fuels. Most people now understand that we need to move away from fossil fuels and adopt clean renewable forms of energy. They may not be aware of how quickly we need to cut greenhouse gases and how deep those cuts must be. Here's the problem. Nature can only take up about half of the carbon dioxide humans are producing each year. The other half goes into the atmosphere. Of that half, 20% or more will still stay in the atmosphere for tens of thousands of years. That 20% addition on a human scale is near-permanent. So to stabilize CO2 levels in the atmosphere, most of the goals and timelines right now that are being set by governments at all levels don't come close to doing the job. If we cut emissions by 20%, then 30% will still go into the atmosphere. Carbon dioxide levels will keep climbing, and more long-term warming will be locked in. Cut emissions by 40%, then 10% will still worsen the problem. Every year, we don't cut emissions at least 50% of current levels. We're making things worse. That's why the minimum realistic goal is to cut CO2 emissions by 50%. And the realistic timeline is as soon as humanly possible, then move to zero emissions. We can't settle for easy cuts. Our realism should be rooted in the real-life consequences of greenhouse gas buildup. The deadly heat waves, sea level rise, droughts and drying soils, more violent storms, biodiversity loss, increased flooding, melting of glaciers and ice caps, and all the rest of it. What we think of as other issues keep pressing themselves on us. Housing, healthcare, hunger, poverty, immigration, terrorism, all tremendous problems. But the truth is, global warming will worsen every one of these dramatically and will do irreparable harm in numerous other ways. Dealing with it must become the number-one priority on our personal and political agendas. I urge council to support the divestment resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina Turner.
Katrina Turner, Charlottesville. I'm going to talk about complaints. And I'm glad, Mr. Richardson, you spoke about complaints against the police. Because the same police that's being talked about, this is an officer that I have been complaining about for three years that assaulted my son. But it's a shame that it took a white person to come forward before anybody even did anything to this police officer. And this officer only went to a park and scared some people. But there's complaints of him putting his hands on people, and nothing was done about that. But just within that little bit of time, in that complaint, this officer, was he found guilty? In that little bit of time, for just appearing at a park and scaring people in the way he acted? He's going to be reprimanded for that, but he's not going to be reprimanded for the times that he's put hands on people. I'm just asking, is there any way that there can be an investigation into the complaints filed against this officer? Because if you can find him guilty for scaring people at a park, how come it's not being found guilty... he's not being found guilty for putting his hands on people? So I would like an open investigation into this police officer, and I would like his complaints against him reviewed, if that's something that you all can do. Because there's no way we should still be getting complaints on this officer if he's been reprimanded from complaints before and before and before. So evidently, there's nothing being done. So I'm just asking if you all could please open an investigation into this officer. Look at the complaints that have been filed against him. Because as I said, if a complaint of him just scaring people and he can be found guilty or whatever it is, but he's not being reprimanded for putting his hands on people, something needs to be done. And if a black person complains and nothing is being done, then a white person complains, and all of a sudden, what, within two or three weeks, something was done? That's not showing us that this community is looking out for us. Thank you. Not the community, the officials.
Kate Fraley.
Hi.
Good evening.
Kate Fraley. I'm a resident of Charlottesville, and I want to talk about the complaint process in the police department. Please support a strong CRB with paid staff so that the oversight is thorough. I want to speak about the complaints process. The quote "internal investigations and citizens' complaints" quote "policy" of the police department describes the process. The CRB should understand and be aware of how it is followed and if it needs changing. That would be part of the CRB's strong, independent oversight role. One of the problems now is that complaints are reviewed, and the person gets the finding, but the person complaining doesn't know if anything was done about it. I know someone whose complaint or part of it was sustained, quote-unquote. The policy says that if a complaint is sustained... excuse me, I have to take out my cough drum. The cough... the internal... sustained, it means the internal investigation found the complaint, quote, "true," and officer is determined to have acted in violation of applicable procedures, techniques, and regulations, end quote. Disciplinary action follows. It is in the policy that the person who complained will not know of the disciplinary action taken. And then, quote, "though a matrix will be provided upon request," unquote. I have not seen the matrix. The policy also stipulates how many complaints of different types would trigger a corrective interview or an early warning alert. The person complaining would also not know if either of those actions had been triggered. A strong CRB would know, and I believe should know. It would help build trust if somebody outside the police department was following what goes on. And according to the written policy, it seems the police department would allow that information to be shared because the policy on page 15, number seven, states, and I quote, "The Internal Affairs Investigator will provide the citizens' advisory panel with a quarterly report of complaints, uses of force, pursuits, and stop and frisks. The report will identify circumstances surrounding each event and findings by the department. The report will further identify any early intervention alerts and the course of action by the department." That means the disciplinary action taken. Although individual officers will not be named in these reports, the department will share this information to illustrate its commitment to both transparency and professional development, end quote. As far as I know, the totality of information listed in the policy was never given to the police advisory panel or to the CRB. The complaint review process and disciplinary action process has stages. So as part of the oversight function, the CRB would be following complaints and would know if an individual, not by name, has had repeated complaints, what the process is supposed to do, and if it is being carried out as designed. I hope you will vote for a strong, independent CRB so that the information is reviewed thoroughly. You have the power to change the narrative that has gone on for much too long. Please do it.
Thank you. Kat McQ.
Good evening, Mayor Walker. Members of council. Kat McQ. I live in Charlottesville, and I am a volunteer member of the Unity Days Planning Committee. First of all, I just wanted to say that I think this idea for the Unity Days for the summer and ongoing into future years is a really excellent attempt at addressing the issues here in the community, looking forward, not looking backwards so much. I also want to commend the staff that's been working with the planning committee. Brian is here, Charlene LaSheen, and I know Joe. It's been a pleasure to work with all of them. They've been working really hard and really keeping us all pulled together and moving forward. So just wanted to encourage you to approve the staff's request this evening for the appropriation for a number of the events that are on the... in the planning stages for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question about the Unity Days. I know we have a presentation about it later, right? So will I just wait there? Never mind. It's fine. I'll wait until the... I'll post my question during the presentation.
All right. Herbert Tucker.
I saw that you wasn't going to be able to make it this evening on the website.
All right, John Hall.
I am John Everett Hall of Fry Spring. We, the one people of Charlottesville, need an inexpensive solution to government-subsidized affordable housing, which offers comfortable shelter for the homeless and people living in poverty at a bare-bones popular price for the taxpayer. My solution acronym is called PACE for People and Communities Engaged in the City Parks for Overnight Campers in Tents in Resolutions Which Have Now Been Shared by Me with City Councilors with the Particulars of My Program. I have collected 500 signatures for homeless, low-income, and other city residents in support of this initiative. I hope to work out details with Brian Daley, Director of Parks and Recreation, author appropriate changes to the Charlottesville, Virginia Code of Ordinances under Article 1, Parks, Section 18-1, to amend the time, place, and manner of park use from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. in 20 city parks to the time stated in my Resolution 10, in the 10 Resolutions for Ballot Inclusion by Referendum on Election Day, Tuesday, November 5, 2019. I am using this opportunity to announce my candidacy for the city council race as an independent. I hope that persons hearing and seeing me speak now will become volunteer circulators of my referendum items. I need 2,266 signatures for each one...
Mr. Hall.
...by qualified voters.
Yeah, you can speak about matters pertaining to city business or personal matters unrelated to campaign. So just...
My personal campaign is to improve the city. I think it's everybody's responsibility to do things that need to be done and bring about correction to problems. It's everybody's... everybody's responsible for the welfare of the public and to better the conditions of the city and people living here. That's what I'm all about. I hope that persons hearing and seeing me speak now will become volunteer circulators of my referendum.
So you can speak about...
About issues.
Issues.
Your platform.
But you can't talk about your campaign or anything related to elections?
I'll try to adjust myself next time.
Thank you. Kay Slaughter.
Hello. I'm Kay Slaughter from the city, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I want to speak about the Drury J. Brown Bridge, which was intended as a local monument to citizens honored for their dedication to justice and equality. We appeal to you, the council, to direct West Main Street consultants to help redesign signage to fulfill this intent. Here, we have three ideas, and I think the pictures will help illustrate. Three small signs identify the bridge, two on the west and one by the steps to Amtrak. We didn't identify any signs on the east side. As shown in the pictures, Amtrak and World of Beer signs far outweigh any perception of the bridge as a monument. Nothing signals that you are entering a special place honoring Drury Brown and the bridge builders of the last 20 years. In order to adequately recognize the bridge as a special monument, the light posts should be retrofitted with holders for banners that would illustrate bridge builders' portraits and names. Because our book, The Bridge Builders, will be coming out soon as part of Unity Days, we now have black-and-white photos of all the men and women named as bridge builders, and these could be silk-screened on banners. And we found many images in other cities which we've illustrated for you on this page, on the following pages. And I'm saying "we." Peggy Van Yerres was going to be with me here tonight, but she had a school event to attend, and she didn't make it, so. Finally, the architect of the 1998 bridge, Morin Bechstein, had pointed to the panels beneath the bridge porches on the north side, near the playground at West Haven, and on the south side, facing... Haven, and on the south side facing Amtrak Station. These were designed to actually hold art or murals, and again, this could be another opportunity for announcing that the bridge is a special place. So in summary, we think that this bridge could be a monument, and it is the only monument to local citizens honoring these incredible persons and connecting the university and downtown. So larger monumental signage at each end of the bridge that would be visible to pedestrians, to bicyclists and drivers, using the post banners to really illustrate who these people were, their names and their images, and then on these, on the bridge structure itself, artistic photos or artworks, and all of these could be accomplished by some types of competition as well. So we hope you'll consider this request and that you will speak out. We have communicated these to the consultants and the staff in the past, but we feel like we want the city council to take some, give some direction on this important monument in the city.
Thank you. Tony Wash. And remind me, one, just a quick second. Kathy, does it stop right at the bridge, right before the bridge? Is that the, or is the bridge part of the...
The bridge is part of West Main Street. And I do have a question.
No, I mean, in the consulting term, okay.
Yeah, in the consultant, yeah, yeah. And it is, and Dr. Richardson, I thought, I'm sorry. We'll continue. Because it is a follow-up from the previous speaker. I, I saw it from our most recent report from staff that the input from the bridge builders was actually being incorporated in the design, and so I want to make sure that that is the case. Yeah, that, that this is a real kind of community participation, participation process, and it's not just simply to kind of check a box and say we've met with these people.
Thank you, sorry.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Tony Wash. I'm the president of Charlottesville. Dr. Richardson, I know you're brand new, so you wouldn't be that familiar with what I'm going to say. There's been discussions about street signs around the Fifth Street area of Charlottesville. There is one thing that could be very simply taken care of, and that is a simple yield sign put up in front of the Exxon station. I can't tell you how many times I almost got clipped as I am coming down Fifth Street, heading towards sixty-four, turning into Wegmans area. I have the green hour, and I'm turning. These people are coming up Fifth Street, and because it's a separate lane, they think they have the right of way, and they just keep on turning because there's no yield sign there. And there's, if you check your record, you'll find there's been many accidents there, many, many accidents. A simple yield sign for those people coming from sixty-four on Fifth Street wanting to go to Wegmans will at least alert them to the fact that they do not have the right of way turning in there. Thank you. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
So really, just to clarify, you're saying people who are turning right, coming from the direction of sixty-four into the entrance are kind of trying to jump ahead of those people who actually have the turn lane coming from town into Wegmans?
Coming from, on Fifth Street, coming from town.
Yep.
You sit in wait, then you have the turn.
The turn light.
And these people.
They're not stopping, okay.
Coming right in front of the Exxon station, well, as you're driving on Fifth Street, forty-five miles an hour.
Yep.
And you have two lanes, all of a sudden, way back at the Moffel House, you get a third lane. So people think, well, oh, that's a lane for turning. I don't have to do anything, I just turn.
I think I just wanted to clarify, yeah, thank you.
And that's what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Landsman.
Hi, I just want to say.
Good evening.
One thing, Sarah Landsman, and I live in Albemarle County, but I just would like to ask, ask for your support for the divestment, for the operating budget. But I also want to please remind you that the retirement fund has, is a much larger fund, and that we hope that you continue to work with that so that also the retirement fund will be divested from fossil fuels and weaponry. This is something we, one time where we can really do something to stop, to help to stave global warming a little bit, and I hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanisha Hudson.
Feel so special. Hey, y'all. Y'all miss me. Well, I got a few things to talk about. One, about one of the comments made last week about the police department. I actually was the second party on that complaint. So yes, I do know that the complaint was actually finalized, but there was a lot of holes in the complaint. And so that's the whole argument, I think, and I agree with Katrina a thousand percent, the complaint process is not fully solidified at all, period. And nothing's being done because the officer that I actually complained on, I was just a witness, he's done more stuff. So once again, we have a problem, and, and I'm gonna take y'all to something that y'all probably haven't even paid attention to yet, but when they see us is a firm confirmation of what comes from Charlottesville. The lady that prosecuted the Central Park Five, she went to UVA. So this is like racial stuff that has happened for centuries, right, that's being breded from UVA. People are coming from Charlottesville, and people are coming here to Charlottesville because I feel like people kind of know that we do stand for this type of stuff. This is the land of Thomas Jefferson. We have a plantation effect. Nothing's changed. What y'all do to black people, you can cut your ass all you want, boo. What y'all do to black people is so common. Like, it's so common here, like, it's no, it's no blueprint for, she talk about Drury Brown Bridge, that bridge should go in West Haven. It should serve the community that you ducking away from this city. That community hides from Main Street. It hides from Main Street. The apartments that y'all approved, the flats, the standard, they throwing trash in the back of West Haven, and people are complaining about it. Like, I, I just, I don't know what else to really say to city council, the police department. What you do to black people in this city is absolutely insane. She talk about seeing Drury Brown signs, any black monument, you can step right over it. You don't even see it. You don't see it. It's nowhere. You don't see it. And then y'all, y'all act like y'all care about black people. Show, show black people that you care. Give black people what you give these white people. Joan Fenton was just down here at last city council meeting. If I could have came, I would have came down here so fast. Talk about a traffic study. A traffic study. A traffic study. Y'all didn't do no traffic study for Tenth Street when you took away parking on Tenth Street and moved the bus stop and moved the covering over the bus stop on Tenth Street. Then you put little extra space for, for grass or whatever to cut off parking. Look at what you've done to black people. Look at what you've done to what, twenty years ago, you considered a soda zone, and now, oh, it's just all for gentrification. Let the white people move on in. Let the white people do this. And please watch what happened to Chocolate City. Y'all keep talking about affordable mixed-use income living, mixed-use income apartments. They did the same thing with the Hope Six Project in Washington DC, and now all black people are gone. Black people, please stay woke out here because they trying to run us out of here.
Thank you. If you could come back, excuse me. Do I have one comment in regards to one of the things you said? I think we can look at in the immediate, in addition to some of the others. But when she talked about the, the signage, the plaques, how we commemorate the African-American community here in our city, she's absolutely right, and we've discussed this on several different occasions, and we've, we've, and not myself included, we have drug our feet in some regards, actually just doing something. We know that there's court proceedings that stops us from doing stuff with the park and so forth, but in the immediate, we could use some of the equity funds to have a much larger designation for the Vinegar Hill plaque. We could use some of our equity funds, even discretionary funds, to put up a larger monument to even acknowledge the Charlottesville Twelve, or even put up something that commemorates more of the people in a more appropriate way. And I think that that's something that we need to look at in the immediate. We know the Blue Ribbon Commission gave us different recommendations, but quite frankly, we've drug our feet on a lot of those for a lot of different reasons. So I, I think you're, you're absolutely right, and I think that's something that we can start now, specifically if we just looked at the Vinegar Hill plaque. Like, we could put a my, or a statue, I don't know, we could put something else there that shows people that we care, even when we look at the slave auction block, which we've been talking about.
Walk right over.
For a very long time. I think she's absolutely right. How it's currently constructed, people really don't care, and we continuously hear that. So that's something that we can do in the immediate, and I don't think that we have to get bogged down in the bureaucracy of we have to go through the BAR, we have to go through this or that. Like, people really just want us to do something now.
But you, you spent millions on Avon Street Bridge. Why do black people gotta cut through Eighth Street under a tunnel to get to Main Street? Why, why is the Drury Brown Bridge not going into the black community? I, I mean, it's so much wrong with the city in this picture, and we fail to accept that. And then we act like Jason Kessler them just popped up in Charlottesville. They been here. They been here, and they been up here. Yeah. They never left, and more coming, and, and we leaving. And, and I mean, how do you make, how do you be a city for everybody and be inclusive and diverse, and, and then be a, a, a place of resistance? Where that came from, I'd like to know.
So I think, I think to your point, many of your points are valid, and in the immediate, again, we can begin to use our resources to address these issues. Some people may say that they're just symbolic, but as we hear, not just from Ms. Hudson, but from others, they truly play a role in how our community is represented. So I would love for us, at an upcoming agenda, whether that is over the next two or three, because I know we're off essentially for July, there's going to be a lot of people here again for August, and I think before that August twelfth meeting, we need to have some kind of discussion and proposals of sorts in regards to how we're going to make amends with, for me specifically, three action items. One, the Vinegar Hill plaque, what will we do to address that? Secondly, the slave auction block. And then, I think, third, some of these other items that Ms. Hudson talked about, the bridge going into West Haven, how many of our communities are indeed hidden? We have to be more forthcoming in how we address those kind of things.
And I'm on the Unity Day Committee, and I want to have something to bring black people back downtown. We don't even feel welcome downtown. And I met with Charlene, I met with Kirby, I met with Ann. I want to do something to, we have so much local talent here, black, white, whatever, it don't matter your race, but to make black people, and it's more for black people than anybody, I want to make that clear, because we don't feel welcome when we go down there.
So that was going to be my comment in regards to earlier from the young lady who talked about Unity Day, but I just chose to save it for that portion of the presentation. So maybe when that comes up, when we have that part of the, the meeting tonight, we can further elaborate. I concur with you a hundred and ten percent, but I, just out of respect for time, I'd love for us to have that conversation then.
Cliff Hall.
Cliff Hall, currently residing at the Haven. Psalms twenty-seven of David. The Lord is the light and my salvation. Who shall I fear? The Lord is the stronghold of my life. Of whom shall I be afraid? When the wicked advanced against me to devour me, it is my enemies and my foes who will stumble and fall. Though an enemy besiege me, my heart will not fear. Though war break out against me, even then I will be confident. My agenda is simple, to get my fiancee, Carol Lynn Joyner, here from Turkey. She is currently a sergeant in the US Army, and she has already been paid, or I'm sorry, not paid, sent a text saying I will give you thirty thousand dollars not to show up in Charlottesville. So it's to those that I'm speaking to tonight. It's those who are trying to keep her from getting to me, and I am speaking out against that. And Amway, I'm speaking out against that, and I've already outlined my agenda on Facebook. If she's not here, you've got the outline, and it's on Facebook.
All right, Anne Khan.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Hi. So, Anne Khan, Charlottesville. I just sent an email to all of you with a, a letter petition. Did everybody get that?
When did you send it?
Thirty minutes ago.
Oh.
So, all right, so the petition reads, "While visiting one of the public government buildings, I noticed the single-stall bathrooms are still gender segregated. Throughout the country, cities have developed ordinances requiring single-stall bathrooms have gender-neutral or gender-inclusive signage." From the city of Denver, St. Paul, Minnesota, Portland, Oregon, all of those are listed in the email. These are just a few examples of numerous cities where their leaders have taken action to truly create an inclusive environment for all residents and visitors. In honor of all of those who have been victimized, kidnapped, and/or murdered because of their gender and/or sex, I am petitioning the city of Charlottesville to establish an ordinance requiring gender-segregated, single-stall bathrooms located in public spaces to be changed to gender-inclusive, single-stall bathrooms in all city-owned and operated buildings. In honor of Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Khan, I think that's a great idea. Would it be possible for us to do some research on this and possibly bring this forth in terms of a future genitive? To think essentially, it's just changing signage.
It basically is just changing signage because the stalls are already there. You're literally, it cost, I think Minnesota paid seventeen thousand dollars to change all of theirs.
Gotcha.
And so it's basically just changing the signage.
Okay.
Yes, I'm not aware of any prohibition in Virginia against this. I do think the city charter, the council could certainly at a future meeting ask the city manager, the city manager is in charge of all city properties, so ultimately that decision rests with that office. But the council can certainly consider it at a meeting and pass a resolution asking...
Well, if you wanted to be totally inclusive in Charlottesville, that would be something that is so minor. Seventeen thousand dollars, you can crowdfund seventeen thousand dollars to change a bathroom sign.
We got you. We got you. Put that hammer on that nail.
Matthew Christensen.
So is Matthews, is Mr. Christians coming up? Just formally, Mr. Richardson? No, I just wanted to formally request. Thought we can get that on upcoming agenda. Thank you.
Matthew Christensen, resident of the county of Albemarle. I'm also in the Unity Days Committee, and I want to thank you all for the support you've given. I think it's a phenomenal change from the past two summers. I think what we've had, the events we've had in May so far, have been stellar. We've had some decent turnout, we've had some really great educational events, and looking forward through June, July, and August, the events coming up, I'm genuinely excited about. We've got screens of films, we have concerts, we have more educational events, we have more community events. This is a great way to showcase the community. I think having the community, the community has shown up to provide the programming, and I hope that you all move forward with completing the funding, especially considering it's such a discount from what was spent last year for what turned out to be a very unfortunate anniversary. So thank you for that, and I hope you continue to fund these types of events because I think it's a good way to educate the community and bring the community together and, and really, both, both, I heard someone, you know, someone else, I've heard a lot of talk about moving forward and not, but we also need to look at the back, the past, because we need to understand where we came from. because we need to understand where we came from and how we got here, um, so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Carey.
Y'all confuse me with that light. But I'm hanging that up. Comes on y'all. Mary Carey, city resident. Been a lot of stuff going on up in here tonight. And, and, uh, uh, race-wide and stuff. And about the statues and plaques and things like that. I've been in this town so many years. When I was a little girl down there where they got that slave auction plaque that's on the, that's down in the ground. It was up on the, up like that, on the platform. Then they put it on the wall. Then they decided to stick it down the ground. So they go showed it the respect and disrespect they have for people of color in this town. But we can go out there on Market Street and look at a 100-foot statue of a racist Confederate general that they gotta get a judge before they can take that thing down. And I know what they can do with it in a matter of minutes. But then again, it's only me. Because when I was a little girl, I couldn't even go up in that park. I couldn't go nowhere near that park. Still don't wanna go up there. So tonight, I'm, I'm like, I like to say that, Ms. Hudson, you right about Ms. Fenton. Every time she come up in here, something happen. Ain't it right, Ms. Hill? Because last week, Mr. Signal, you wasn't here. Ms. Hill di- didn't wanna vote on the pilot because you weren't here. But Mr. Bellamy, you weren't here when they gave Downtown Business Association to, to Joan Fenton $75,000. They voted on that. You see what I'm saying? That's the difference. Okay. And, Kay Sloane, you know I love you, because you was a mayor when I was raising hell. But anyway, she's right. She's right. Y'all don't recognize anybody in this town of color. And how do Charlotte, how did Charlottesville get started? What's the name of this, this town? Charlottesville. Phil. Know your history. Black history is American history. And the most disrespected person in America is the black woman. I got, that's what I'm getting to. The most unprotected woman in America is the black woman. The strongest woman in America is the black woman. And all I got to say, don't mess with us. And Ms. Gavin, I'd like to say to you, still waiting on your apology to the black community for Vinegar Hill and Star Hill, they're not the same, never have been. You can sit there, run for whatever you want, dog catcher, road warrior, whatever, doesn't matter. I'm gonna get my apology from you one way or the other, even if you gotta sneak it to me. Because you do not know black history in this town. But you done told this town up, girlfriend. You haven't given the black people anything in this town. And Mr. Bellamy, when you promised those black people the bus stop down there on 10th and Page, three white people moved in the neighborhood and took it away. I'm done.
So we have one more slot. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Don Gather, city of Richmond. Just wanna say hello to everybody. To piggyback some of the previous comments, you, please, please recognize this country, if not this, this, this town, this community, this city, was built solely on genocide and slavery. When you have the opportunity, when you have the chance, when it presents itself, honor and recognize those people and those persons of color and those people who are Native Americans, who gave so much to this community at every opportunity that you can. Please, uh, uh, go back and revisit the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission and initiate those that, that, that you can do so immediately. Uh, I, I appreciate your, uh, your thoughts and your concerns, Mr. Bellamy. And I, I, I hope that we are able to do something in the immediate that, that is tangible and that, and that's, that's immediately recognizable throughout the community. And also, since we won't have another City Council meeting before the primary, please, everyone, remember June 11th, get out and vote. Whereas, we can't use this as a campaign platform. I can't tell you who or recommend who to vote for. But I will suggest that everyone, please, just get out and vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor Walker, earlier today, we had someone canceled. And then we had someone that was added to the confirmed list.
That's me.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure that we gave that person an opportunity.
No, it wasn't.
She was supposed to have been in place of the person who had pulled out right after we sent out the list, because she was first on the waitlist.
My name is Tamika Dorrett. And, um, I am a resident of the city of Charlottesville. Today, I'm here on behalf of my son. Um, my son is a 10-year-old student at Brody Moran Elementary School. And he was attacked on a school bus by another student. The bus driver had a couple more stops before she came to my home. She never stopped the bus. She was well aware of the incident, and she didn't do anything. Um, this was on May 15th. My son had to go to the ER. He had a busted lip, um, a bruised jaw, and an injured shoulder. My son, of course, is black. The other student that did this to him is foreign. My goddaughter is black. And she told her teacher that to leave her alone. And she was doing, excuse my language, too damn much. The school suspended my goddaughter for the rest of the year. This little boy who beat my son savagely, lied about it on the school bus, he got four days. I kept my son at home because of his injuries and his sheer fear of going to school. I was not going to return him to school. I, as a parent, I did exactly what I was supposed to do. I showed up at the school. I met with the principals. I spoke with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. I did everything I was supposed to do, keeping in contact with the principal every single day, letting her know that the mental stability of my son, since he was attacked on the bus, was shot. He hasn't slept in three weeks since this happened on May 15th. And I wasn't going to return him to school. I was told by the principal, some, uh, the assistant superintendent, that they had a safety plan in place for my son. My son returned to school on May the 28th, um, only to have students pick on him because the little boy went around the school telling everyone, excuse my language, for lack of a better phrase, that he whipped my son's ass. So my son came home from his first day back of school, very sad, didn't wanna go. The next morning, I tried to encourage my son again to go to school. And he told me, "Mama, if you didn't make me go here, I wouldn't go." I regret it to this day. I took my son to school yet again. He wasn't back at school a day and a half at a Minds in Motion rehearsal, which is for, for kids that are good. It, it should be a privilege for children that were good. The same child that beat my son was at Minds in Motion rehearsal. Had I not showed up to the school, he would've done it again. The same boy, after I told that there was a safety plan in place, came after my son in my presence, not once, but twice. And no one did anything. There were several staff members there, all adults, his teachers, that were all made aware of this incident. And no one did anything. So when I tell you that, um, like I said, and I hate to say it, if my son was black, he would be in jail. He would be at Blue Ridge, he would be in trouble. If my 12-year-old son went and defended him and beat this little boy up for beating his brother up, my 12-year-old would be in jail right now. But I have filed two police reports in two weeks on the same child, and nothing was done. Now I'm having to look at my son every day and send him back to school where he, he, he told, I met with some of the staff today, and he straight up told him to his face, he doesn't feel safe. The teachers that were supposed to protect me didn't do it. So I'm just wondering, someone needs to be held accountable. The bus driver still has her job when she knew what happened to my son. She, she told me what happened to my son. The principal, she still has her job. But she was the one that called me and relayed to me how savage that her, the child's family, and several other staff had to walk out because my son was beaten that bad on the school bus. And I just wanna let you know that that bullying is here. It, it is in our school system. And I wanna let you know, my son could be dead. And I thank God every day that he was strong enough because this boy beat him from the school all the way home. And no one did anything. And when the officer asked my son, "What made him stop hitting you?" The only thing he could say was that we got home. So I really would ask you to look into some kind of funding because the staff was there. The staff was made aware. The bus driver was aware. And no one did nothing for my son. And then the principal had the audacity, when I told the principal that she made me look bad as a mother, she had the question to ask me why. Because I listened to you. I believed in your plan. I believed in the school system when they said they were gonna do what they did to do to keep my son safe. And they didn't. Tanisha Hudson is actually the only person that actually came to my rescue to help me out through any of this. Because like I said, I met her, I showed up. It wasn't that I just let this happen. I showed up to the schools, like I showed up. I came in the office, and I met with her. I didn't, I didn't play this off like, oh, he's a black child. No, mentally, my son is broken. I had a good kid. Never been in trouble, never, never, never ever been in trouble. From the time he was at Maccah, from kindergarten to now. Never been in the office, nothing, ever. Always respectful, done what he's supposed to do. And he got his ass whipped by a foreigner. A foreigner. They can't even speak English, barely.
So I, um, the email that you sent me, you didn't send your number. I did talk to the associate superintendent today and Dr. Atkins, Jim Henderson and Dr. Atkins. So I will, I don't know what you want me to share publicly, but I will talk to you afterwards about, um, some of the, you know, just what I, just some questions that I have with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mayor Walker, can I ask a question of, of Dr. Richardson too? Because Dr. Richardson, are we not, as the city government, involved with the bus driving?
We are involved with the bus driving.
So I would think that...
We have had communication with them. But we need to actually follow up and get some more information.
I would appreciate that. Then it's also that aspect as well, the, the bus driving, the school bus program that we fund and, to some extent, manage.
If I'm not mistaken, we also, we did also get, the, the issue of the bullying program that we have, and we don't fund, we fund it indirectly because we fund the schools. But, but I think last year, the adequacy of our bullying program came up. And I would...
All right. All right. So we're gonna have break until 8:05?